Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you.
We will now receive testimony from Ms. Harvey. Again, five minutes. Identify and who you represent. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Linda Harvey, and I am here to represent. I am part of the Protect Ohio Children Coalition, and I also represent my organization, Mission America. And I'm coming before you today to address the issue of social-emotional learning and to ask you to reconsider the SEL framework adopted by this board in 2019 focusing on what is called "the whole child." And so I just want to start by asking a very basic question that, under what right can any school or the ODE claim to be in charge of the whole child? Isn't that what the family and parents are for? I would submit that a whole-child objective is substantial overreach of the state agency's role and a school's role. And while there may be good intentions on the front end, the outcomes can be harmful and disruptive in a child's life, and there are premature and sometimes inaccurate labels placed on children, assessments which remain in databases. And the existence of data with mental health evaluations of children is problematic to begin with. So intervention with individual students may sometimes be justified, and that's been going on forever, but counseling of whole classes? What responsibility does the school have for reckless amateur psychology that this can easily enable? Now granted, it doesn't always, but we should err on the side of caution. It's as if school districts have decided that so many children need to be fixed from the ground up, that whole classes need to be counseled and they need to step in for every student. Again, this is substantial overreaction and overreach, and it tends to supplant the role of the parent. It's not the school's purview. Schools need to focus on academics. And until Ohio achieves proficiency in math and reading in the 90th percentile or so, and I know you all would love that. But these other goals are expensive, they're distracting, and they're time-wasting, and they're potentially harmful. Is SEL producing higher student academic achievement? Unfortunately, there's not research that's showing that. We are hearing from many parents, to the contrary, around the state with concerns about SEL program content, including a multitude of progressive special interest concerns, which in some instances are being presented to students as if it is set in stone and as if that is the only viewpoint. Students are then manipulated and pressured, in many cases, to agree with those as part of social awareness competency or relationship skills. There are surveys asking students to declare their gender identity or sexual orientation. Parents have been caught unaware because they were not told this was going to happen in advance. And these such intrusive and personal questions are quite inappropriate. Students are nudged into action civics, again, through some SEL programs, and again, a substantial bias toward adopting progressive causes and issues with which they're given a limited background quite often. SEL applications can seemingly destabilize children or mold them into uncritical group thinkers. Teachers with limited training can evaluate students and prescribe interventions that may remain in a student's permanent data file. Many of SEL program activities, classroom activities, involve surveys and questionnaires where students log in using their student ID. And parent consent forms seem to be quite lackadaisical for quite a bit of this. There's an overarching consent, but not details. Details are not given. The SEL vendor Panorama, for instance, which has contracted with many Ohio schools, offers a mechanism for some students to check in each day or each week, and so that that student can then be identified if they need help that day academically, socially, or emotionally. Okay? There's, think about that. If you've had an, the parent has had an argument with their child going into school that day to clean your room. You're not, you're grounded for X, Y, or Z. How is that going to come out in the students' check-in that day? Panorama has a bank of questions. Schools can regularly ask students, like, "What emotion are you feeling today?" Or "Would you like to be, to talk privately with an adult from the school about how you're feeling or something on your mind?" That's really intrusive. Many of the surveys function like push polls and serve to not just query students about feelings, attitudes, and beliefs, but to normalize attitudes and behaviors, form opinions, or encourage discontent where it did not exist before. And there's another huge elephant in the room regarding surveys of minor children. They are not reliable survey respondents for any, if you're going to project anything based on large-scale surveys of adolescents, good luck. That's going down a very shaky road. As an alternative, many, if not all, of the expressed goals of SEL are achieved through sustained, as a byproduct of sustained academic classroom instruction. So it is my hope that we can have a sincere and thorough reconsideration of SEL as the foundation of the department's strategic plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. You met the time limit.
I tried.
Ms. Newman, Dr. Kilgore, Dr. Collins, Mr. Shea.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair McGuire, and thank you for coming to speak today.
Thank you.
I think this is probably the tip of the iceberg on some of the conversations that we're going to have around social-emotional learning, and I think they're incredibly important when we move forward. This is a request that I would ask of the public and future individuals that come to present about some of these topics, is being able to provide testimony to the board that we could potentially review prior to its presentation. I don't see it in our board books yet. I'm sorry. I do not see this testimony in our board books. And the reason I'm asking about that is there were a lot of oversweeping generalizations that were made in this testimony.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing you. Somebody's, I have a little bit of a hearing deficit.
Happy to pull this up closer.
Sorry.
There were a lot of oversweeping generalizations made in the testimony where it would have been incredibly helpful to be prepared, because I believe if we're going to talk about this in a legitimate way, we need to dialogue, and we do not have the opportunity to do that right now. So I would encourage those, because this is an important discussion, and I believe that the right answer comes from somewhere in the middle. And so I would appreciate, as a board member, being able to be prepared to argue against many of the assumptions that were made around data collection, about the non-professionalization of our educators. The list goes on, and I'm not going to do that right now, but I will be prepared to do that in the future. So I am just asking, and if you would be willing to submit your testimony to the board so we could have that as a reference, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
I did, yes, I did. And I also can provide any additional backup if you wish and give examples, because we are, Protect Ohio Children is hearing from parents throughout the state with concerns about this.
Yes, and I think evidence that goes with the accusations would be incredibly helpful. I think what we hear a lot of, we assume certain things are going on when they're not. So I think the more specific we can be, the better we can be as a board to be productive. Thank you.
Mr. Goodman, you can, can you verify that the written portion?
We received copies of the written portion.
Yeah, right. I can send it electronically if you'd like.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Kilgore.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for coming to speak with us. And you shared concern about where the data lands. I've always been concerned with labels and data collection. And as educators, a career educator, we're taught to teach, but not necessarily to evaluate a student's psychology or sociology for the day. And that also was represented by our first speaker, and I'm sorry, her name was? Ms. Williams also expressed that same kind of concern about the data collection and how long that will follow that child even into adulthood. We don't know yet, because this is relatively new, and it should be in our radar and conversation, the permanence of the collected data. Thank you, thank you very much. I do appreciate your time and your effort.
So I could respond a little bit with a couple of examples, if you would like, about data issues?
Yes, please.
Okay, I, we've heard that in the Hilliard School District, there are red flags, for instance, and I think this is maybe other school districts, placed in student files. That seems to be problematic for a lot of people, thinking, "What does that mean?" The kind of thing that, this was, there's a position paper that reviewed this, but there's a vendor a few years ago of surveys called Teen Screen. And in Connecticut, this is a Connecticut example, there was a girl who was forced to take the survey. Parents did not know in advance about the knowledge, the consent, the content of the survey. And as a result of her responses, she was stopped in the hallway by someone she had never met who evaluated her. Marked in her file that she had social anxiety disorder, when she's just a very serious student who doesn't party, and marked with obsessive-compulsive disorder. Her parents sued the school and the vendor, as they should. In my view, that's substantial overreach. So I guess the point is, of course, that's not going to happen everywhere. Of course, there are good intentions. No one doubts that. But can, that's always been the purview of the school, is to intervene in individual situations. So it's the sweeping nature of the SEL framework, the recommendations as a strategic plan, and parts of the elements that are adopted in some of the schools, and then what we're seeing, how this dovetails off into all kinds of other issues and matters.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. And I want to ask board members, please speak into your mics.
Yes.
And turn them off when you're done. Thank you.
Hi. I feel like I have to say that, so everyone knows I'm over here. So I do, I have a couple of questions for you. This is, you know, this is a pretty touchy issue, and I'll just say, you know, where I come from as a parent is, I struggle with the lines between where another parent's values get to intercede on my parent values. You know, we have a very, we have a divided society in general, and I can appreciate where one parent doesn't want their children exposed to certain things, but what if I do? And what if I do want my child to be asked, you know, where he's at on his scale each day? You know, a perfect example is my four-year-old, who got in trouble at daycare just last week, you know, and he and the teacher butted heads, and I would love, I want my kids' teachers to love them the way I love them. And I do want them to care about how they're feeling, that maybe he was having a bad day, you know, and someone needed to ask him that. So that's where I come from as a parent, and I want to have that baseline, because what I'm going to ask you is, as an educator, I'm also concerned about making sure that we are preparing students for the workforce. And when I look at the standards themselves, a lot of these standards are about regulating your emotions so you can be a productive member of a team, regulating yourself so you can do your work, putting yourself in check, you know, being on a team. What does that mean? So I'm wondering if you have specific references in the standards themselves that are tied to the exact issues you're talking about today?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, let me, let me give you an example. Hang on one second. So the way this can go, and I totally agree with you, that people should learn to manage their emotions and so on, but as I was saying, one of the things that, you know, it's as if we weren't doing this before the SEL standards were coming along, but yes, we're seeing much more anxiety in kids. We're seeing kids that have anger management problems. We have some entire school districts that are seeing great behavioral problems. I know that's the intention, okay? However, what we've traditionally done is intervene, given room for privacy, given room for the need for the school to focus on academic achievement. And by, for instance, empathy is one of the things that is in SEL everywhere. That can be achieved by studying great works of literature, biographies, the Holocaust. That should achieve empathy for a lot of students. Leadership skills, that's another part of SEL. That should be achieved by things like, you know, a public speaking course. Goal-setting is achieved by doing your homework and doing, turning it in on time, not, we have endless questions in some of these surveys about, "Do you think you will be able to do your homework on time?" It's process-oriented. It's like, if you know adolescent boys at all, they're, some of them are going to say, "Oh, stop, whatever." And they're just going to, and that's truly, you know, as educators, that's what they're going to do. And then we also have literacy issues with, some kids can't even read the questions. But let me give you one specific example that is greatly concerning to a lot of people. Under the competency of relationship skills, this is from the ODE site, under high school D1, incorporate compassionate and inclusive practices in relationships. Okay, does this need to really be said, but what's this, I mean, and we can demonstrate that all through our teaching, all through our classes. However, what's happening with that is that is being used to pivot in all kinds of things that parents, many parents do not want, and the kids themselves don't want. For instance, in Dublin schools and in Olentany schools, I've gotten reports from two different situations where teachers are asking students to stand up the entire class and declare their pronouns. And that is for the purpose of respecting folks that may not be identifying as, with their biological body. So that's fine that you treat someone civilly, but to impose that kind of a standard to meet something like this. Or the recent teacher trainings in Hilliard, in Merrimont, in Parma, and in the Columbus City Schools, where flat-out homosexual activist groups have come in and taught, teachers given entire workshops on every aspect of pronoun definition and all of this, and there's no equal time that anybody can tell that someone's coming in and saying, "Traditional values actually work quite well, and these are inappropriate for kids at this, at this level."
Follow-up, Dr. Collins, and then Mr. Shea.
So we had this fantastic presentation a little bit ago on standards development and the lines between what the board's purview is and what local communities' purview is. And it sounds like, even in the answer that you just gave me, it doesn't sound like you took issue with the standard itself, so much as how the standard has been interpreted and implemented at the local level. Because it sounds like we're on the same page with a lot of, the importance of this goes. You mentioned previously, something could be taught through literacy, and something could be taught in a speech class. And I totally agree with you. I think that this document, because the purview of the board is to approve a document of standards, not to deal with how it's implemented. And I think this document gives the guidance for what you just mentioned. What better guidance than to say, "Well, this would be easily incorporated into a speech class. Let's put this skill into speech. Let's put this skill." So I encourage people that are taking issue with the SEL standards to really look at, is it the standard or is it the implementation? And if it's the implementation, that's local control. That's local districts making those decisions. So I hate to make sweeping decisions. In any case, I hate to make a sweeping decision to take away or prevent some parents from having what they want to see in their classroom. By taking away a guide that isn't required by law, that districts can or cannot choose, that does help to provide some direction for decision-making, because without this, without direction for decision-making, some of those skills that should be getting taught in speech, or through literacy, or in whatever classes, are just, are missed if we don't take the time to provide some guidance on that.
Might I respond to that then?
Yes, ma'am.
That's lovely, and I see where you're coming from. The issue, I would say, is that it's, again, it's as if no one was thinking of this before these standards, and as if it can't be misused in a way of the data tracking and the quick analysis, and people, teachers that are, you know, not counselors assessing kids, and this can, some of these questions are so intrusive that they can really rattle very sensitive kids, okay? For instance, you know, "How are you feeling today? Do you feel you get along well with the class?" Or, here's another one, they can really misconstrue teachers and put teachers in a bad light. And I would imagine, if we looked, we're going to find that these survey instruments, which that's a huge part of SEL...
But those are not mentioned in the standards, right? There's no surveys, no documents, no programs, no curriculum that's mentioned in the standards, correct?
That's probably true.
That is, okay.
Okay, so, okay, just, but the way, the survey, the survey issue has been used to, when teachers say, "Do you feel your teacher is, listens to you?" I mean, how many students have thought, "No, I should have gotten a B on that test, and she gave me a C minus," and then you're going to mark down, it's unfair. And we're, again, the survey respondents for minor children are questionable. So that's the application, and you're right, perhaps it's not in the standards, but then I think we have to look at, on the ground, how it's being used.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, and then Ms. Johnson, and then Mr. LaRue.
Thank you, President McGuire, and thank you very much, Ms. Harvey, for being here today. I appreciate your examples. Yeah, I share many of your concerns, and for me, it's also an issue of balance. I pointed out in a conversation earlier that our strategic plan contains the words "social" and "emotional" more times than it does the word "academics." But I was wondering if you could expand upon, you already gave some examples, but examples of how academics, you said, could achieve some of the same purported goals. I know you gave some. And then also, if you could expand upon how surveys for minor children are unreliable. Again, you mentioned adolescent, you know, boys. I wouldn't trust my five-year-old son's response on that either, but if you could expand on that, I'd appreciate it.
Right. You know, again, there is so much in the social-emotional standards that are about relationship skills. You know, children learn, and I'm not, I'm preaching to the choir here. I was a teacher back a few decades ago, and I've had children and now grandchildren in the public schools, so I'm somewhat familiar, but, you know, you're the experts. But children learn by, they learn self-esteem and getting along with peers, and goal management by serious academic study. And you only have so many hours in the day. When we're spending time analyzing kids and quizzing kids, and then all the other sort of social agendas that are coming along the way, you gotta, you know, as parents, and as board members, and as professionals, you only have so much time. You have to focus. You have to stay in your lane. I guess I'm saying, this is like, if I could summarize my talk, we need to stay in our lane here, okay? So, so the, part two of what you were saying is about the...
The surveys for children being unreliable?
Yes. And so we have a number of activist groups around the country, in various areas, that are using climate surveys and so on, that are online surveys of adolescents. And sometimes these are, these are the same thing you're getting in the classroom. And so, and they're basing an awful lot of funding and even legislation on the responses of 13-year-olds to, "Do you think you've been bullied?" For instance. Well, raise your hand in here if you had a non-traumatic adolescence, you know. Who hasn't? I mean, it's all in the eye of the beholder. So we need to be very careful. If there's data, it needs to not invade privacy. If there are surveys, it needs to not rely heavily on the response of minor children.
Ms. Johnson, and then Mr. LaRue.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess, I appreciate Dr. Collins saying, it sounds like you have a concern with how these standards are being implemented in various places in some individual examples as opposed to having a problem with these standards themselves. So I wanted to start out that way. I had an hour conversation with a former board member a while back, and she spent that hour trying to convince me that parents should be the ones doing this work. As you and I know, there are a lot of children that don't have parents, whether they're homeless, whether they're in foster families, or as a result of COVID, their parents have died. So my question to you is, who does this work if they don't have parents?
Well, absolutely. You know, you're absolutely right. That's the situation that schools are facing. And I look at the motivation behind this, and of course, educators are seeing a huge change and shift in the demographics and the, I guess even the social demographics of what's happening with families and their children. However, the, the way some of this goes is that, again, individual intervention with kids is, and participation in, you know, structured encouragement of participation in, I mean, how many kids' lives have been changed by athletics or by after-school activities in those kinds of things that help the single-parent family and help those that are struggling economically? The overarching assumption that we need to be the in loco parentis for all these families, that everyone needs to be fixed, again, that's the issue, is not the purview of education. I think we have to get back to our main goal.
Okay, follow-up, please. So I didn't hear an answer as to who does this if they don't have parents?
The school can intervene on an individual basis, as they have all along, with the guardians. Apparently, kids would have some sort of guardian.
Okay, I just wanted to give a quick example. I taught 40 years, and one of the most important questions I ever asked my students was, "How are you feeling?" And the reason that question is important is because when a child walks in the room, if I don't know how they're feeling, then if I ask them to do something and they refuse to do it, then I may immediately go to a punishment as opposed to understanding that their dad was killed the night before, and they're not ready to really perform academically. They can't perform academically if they have the death of their father on their mind. And so it's really important, if I'm going to have my, all my students feeling safe and feeling that they have a teacher who respects how they feel and where they're coming, it's going to be really important for me to know how that child is feeling when they walk in the classroom, or I'll be writing a number of referrals that those children don't deserve. So I just think it's really important for a teacher, an effective teacher, to have the pulse of every single one of her students as they come in the room. And there are many creative ways that teachers doing that without invading anybody's privacy, but simply because the teacher wants their children to feel safe and to feel like they have the respect of their teacher.
Absolutely. It's just, the question is, does it need to be written in a standard? That would seem to be...
It's not in the standard.
Well, in the surveys that are being used to apply to the standard.
Surveys, okay.
Mr. LaRue, and then Mr. Kern, and then Ms. Fessler.
Thank you, President McGuire. Yeah, I thought this was fascinating. I appreciate you coming out. I would just, and I think it really gets to what Dr. Collins said about the whole implementation aspect of it. You used the term "action civics." And action civics can be a very positive thing. So I just don't want, as, I'm a 30-year social studies teacher, so, and I know you didn't mean it this way, but, you know, you can support Academic Content Statement 21 about World War II. My students, we interviewed World War II veterans. Those interviews are now at the Library of Congress. That is action civics being, and I don't mean this, I'm just saying, like, all these things, it can be used, action civics can be wonderful. It can also be misused, but I just don't want folks to think that somehow action civics in and of itself is bad. I will tell you, one of the greatest blessings for my students was the opportunity to interview World War II veterans, most of whom have since passed since the time we did it. And that was actually supporting the academic work of academic content.
Right.
So, I mean, it can be, and again, it can be misused, like anything. It can be misused, but again, that's in the implementation. But I do appreciate you coming out and raising this. Thank you.
Right. Right.
Mr. Kern.
Well, I'd just like to echo and, and, you know, say thanks for, for being here. And, you know, one of the things that I would just ask, it's a very simple ask, you know, for organizations like yours is, we've had this whole conversation about the implementation of the standards, whether it's truly based on the standards themselves as they've been written, how would your organization amend the current standards? You know, what are the specific concerns within the standards themselves from the state level? Or what guidance could this board provide further with these standards to ensure that some of these activities that maybe take these standards past what they were intended to do, keep that from being done in local school districts? But, you know, I would just reemphasize, I think most of the examples that you're talking about today really require parents to engage with their local school boards on these conversations, because I do believe a lot of these activities go beyond what the standards indicate that the state board has passed. But if there are specifics here that we need to be looking at, I would just ask, you know, organizations like yours to please share those specifics with us so we can...
Right. I guess the, the, the way I'm coming at this is that it seems to me that just the SEL framework itself is perhaps, it, to the depth that it, that is, and the extensive manner in all the goals and standards, is, is overreach. It's, doesn't, it doesn't need to be that, to that extent. And the whole child, the whole child, excuse me very much, is not the responsibility of the school. I know we can have situations where families seem to be absent, you know, but it's, it, there is a guardian, parents or a guardian, and that's the legal responsibility. And so I think that's, that's where, that's, it's a mistake to use the term "whole child." There's many parts of a child's background, their healthcare, their wellbeing, their mental, their mental health, any counseling that goes on, their educational future, is not the legal purview of the school. It's, it's the family.
Ms. Fessler, and then Mr. Davis.
And Mr. Hagan wants in here too. Thank you for coming today. Just for context, I'm going to tell you a little, little story. Back in the 1990s era, we used to have state proficiency tests, and turn the microphone on.
I have a little hearing deficit. It's the age issue coming up on me. Sorry.
Yes, this is just context for my, context for my question. So back in the 1990s, we had the state proficiency test, and if a child did not pass, then they were given intervention. And as a board member, I had access to the intervention materials, and I remember this so vividly, and this does connect to where you're going. One of the questions was, tell me a secret you've never told anyone. Another question was, describe a perfect parent. Those are interesting, but what is even more interesting to me even now is the responses were not graded on spelling, punctuation, or grammar. It was the content in response to the question. And so a parent, they have no way of opting their child out of anything like that if they don't know about it. So we have a transparency problem. More, more recently, I was in a committee meeting, and this was when we had renamed the test, and I had to sign a piece of paper that I wouldn't tell any of the children what was on it. I would have been embarrassed. I was a little more conservative even than, than I am now, but it was, one of the questions on the test was going to be for the child to be able to make the difference between the sperm abnormalities of cheetahs and cats. And see, I think most parents want their kid to graduate from school knowing when water boils and when it freezes. You know, I have not had any need to deal with the abnormalities of such and so for the remainder of my life. So my point is, parents can't opt out of what they don't know. So I'd like for you to tell me what you know, because I think you know more than I know, about how parents can opt their children out of these things that are not purely academic, would you care to respond to that?
I believe we have, there, there is, in the Ohio Abused Code, there is the, the option for parents to review curricula, and that is the problem, where parents are not seeing the details ahead of time. They're being told that, well, it's copyrighted material. Well, sorry, copyrighted material gets online reviews, and so you're, as a parent, you have a right to that, to take a look at it. You're not going to transmit it anywhere. And there are, there are notifications that come home quite often about, again, SEL applications that are surveys, and they will describe, the survey's going to, you know, measure your child's attitudes and their, how well they get along with peers, and are they, how, you know, can they set goals and so on. It will not tell you the intrusive nature of some of the items. For instance, question, a questionnaire in Beaver Creek, Ohio, asked sixth graders about their sexual orientation, and without parents knowing that. It was only the, the daughter who came home and said, guess what, I was asked on a survey today? No idea about that. That's the kind of thing you get into. So you're right, and people have noticed this, the standards don't specify that. It has opened the door to all of this, including all the vendor folks that, and are they the horse, you know, the horse, the car driving the horse here? So many of the, the vendors now are making a lot of this, on this, so. Does that answer your question? I was kind of rambling a little bit there.
Follow-up, please. Could you enlighten me, perhaps others, a little bit more about the steps to gain access to the material of this nature before it touches their child's eyeballs or ears, and then how to follow up in terms of knowing what their child's responses were?
Yes, that's the part that I didn't answer in any, any detail. So every, every school should be asking permission. If they are not, then you have to, as a parent, parents need to be proactive and ask their school and ask them to enter into the child's file your request to, to have opt-out permission for anything, opt-in permission for anything that they are presented that's of a detailed nature like that, all surveys. In my view, many of these surveys, if not all, could be done away with on a school, on a classroom-wide basis.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mrs. Harvey? For, for coming to us today. Especially your courage in bringing this, this forward. It's a pretty hot-button issue where I come from. Members, Shea said that, that he shared some of your concerns. I don't share some of your concerns, I share virtually all of them. And I'm looking forward to getting a digital copy of your presentation. Unlike some other members who can't wait to disassemble it, I plan to celebrate and spread them around. I come from an area where SEL is viewed with great suspicion in that it, it departs radically from academics. I'm in constant dialogue with a lot of superintendents in my area, and, and they whine to me that our schools over the last decade or so look a lot more like clinics than schools. And that troubles them, because the good students, the good families are leaving them to go to real schools in many cases. So I, I want to share your remarks with, with them because they articulate my concerns actually better than, than I can. So with you on that, and look forward to hearing more from you. Thank you.
Great, I'm happy to send it electronically. How can I do that? Should I send that to Alex then? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And our final question will be from Mr. Hagan.
All right, final question. Thank you. Does that mean for the day or just this issue?
For this session.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll make it shorter then. You mentioned concerns about technology and how it's used, and also, I wonder if you could give examples...
Mr. Hagan, yeah.
You mentioned concerns about technology and how the use of that is growing, and also, can you give examples of where SEL is kind of replacing academics and, and being a bigger emphasis than what a lot of us perceive schools should be?
Well, those are some sweeping things. I, I don't pretend to be a technology expert. I just know that there are privacy issues, and again, the, the SEL vendors and folks responding to this, this, these frameworks that are in, in the popularity of this trend are producing all kinds of things. There's even a robot called Moxie now that's being marketed for, to achieve SEL goals with your, you know, your small child. It's basically you're interacting with a robot for games and activities and, you know, sorry, I, I'm not seeing that that's a good thing. Human, human-to-human is, is really good. But the data collection in some of the schools, there's, there's one situation where someone shared with me privately, a school staff person, that their school was busy marking students that they thought were, had problem issues, but one student tried to commit suicide, and praise God, she did not succeed. Went back and checked her file, there was, she had perfect file. From a, from a survey standpoint, she was the A-plus student. No, no, no marks on this at all. So how effective is it if you're not going to be able to identify that? And the second part of your question is, say that one more time.
Have you seen examples of schools, or can you give us examples of schools where the emphasis on SEL is taking away from the academic emphasis?
Yeah, well, I, let me give you an example, okay? I've got a, this is one that comes to mind. It's not exactly what you're saying, but it, it really kind of is, okay? So, one of the things about the SEL, relationship skills and social awareness and so on, is getting along with others. And again, in West Giaga High School, this is what a parent shared with me, a middle school, they, they had a project called Pieces of Microaggressions. And children drew their, drew their, traced their hands and then drew little qualities in these, you know, in their fingers that they wanted, and they were asked to take, take a no-hate pledge, which is, again, something disseminated by the Anti-Defamation League. But when, okay, so there was a lot of discussion about hate and identifying hate. Okay, this is fine, except that in today's world, lots of things are identified as hate. If, if you don't, if you don't agree with me and share my values, you hate me. You know, and this is feeding into that. Let's get back to spending time on language issues, math, science. This is, this is almost like make-work. When I was a teacher, I would have thought, you know, okay, yeah, let's, let's fill some classroom time with this. It struck me as very wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you so much.
Our next testimony comes from...